To the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to go ahead and read a proclamation. Whereas service to others is a hallmark of the American character and central how to how we meet our challenges. Whereas the nation's mayors are increasingly turning to national service and volunteerism as a cost-effective strategy to meet city needs. And whereas AmeriCorps and SeniorCorps address the most pressing challenges facing our cities in the nation, from educating students for jobs for the 21st century and supporting veterans and military families, to preserving the environment and helping communities recover from natural disasters. And whereas national service expands economic opportunity by creating more sustainable resilient communities and providing education, career skills, and leadership abilities for those who serve. And whereas national service participants serve in more than 70,000 locations across the country, bolstering the civic, neighborhood, and faith-based organizations that are so vital to our economy and social well-being. And whereas national service participants increase the impact of the organizations they serve with, both through their direct service and by recruiting and managing millions of additional volunteers. And whereas national service represents a unique public-private partnership that invests in community solutions and leverages non-federal resources to strengthen community impact and increase the return on taxpayer dollars. And whereas AmeriCorps members and SeniorCorps volunteers demonstrate commitment, dedication, and patriotism by making an extensive commitment to service and commitment that remains within in their future endeavors. And whereas the Corporation for National and Community Service shares a priority with mayors nationwide to engage citizens and improve lives and strengthen communities, and is joining with mayors across the country to support the Mayor's Day of Recognition for National Service on April 9, 2013. Now, therefore, I Doug Neely, Mayor of Oregon City, hereby proclaim April 9, 2013 as National Service Recognition Day and encourage residents to recognize the positive impact of national service in our city, to thank those who serve, and to find ways to give back to our communities. And I will be setting my hand to this on this day of, the 20th day of March, 2013. With that, are there any citizen comments on anything that is not on the agenda? Do we have anybody on the floor? Let's see, nobody has requested, this hasn't happened for a long time. Nobody's requested, you still have a chance. Going, going, gone. Adoption of the agenda, is there anything, anybody was pulled off the, off of the, I'm sure we have a consent agenda, yes.
No.
There are none? With that, we'll go into public hearings, we're continuing land use application requesting approval for a zone change, 11 lot subdivision and geologic hazards for a property located at 19370 Peace Road. And I believe that Christina Robertson Gardner will be taking the place of Tony.
Yes.
In this discussion.
Yes, we just asked that the City Commission continue the hearing to the April 17, 2013 City Commission hearing to allow the Planning Commission additional time to review this application.
Okay, any difficulty there?
So moved.
Second.
Sorry, I was technically challenged at the moment.
Swat.
Okay, record.
Okay, it's coming, here we go. And the vote is unanimous.
Unanimous.
Okay, okay. That will go on to Resolution Number 1308 granting a telecommunications franchise to Light Speed Networks Incorporated to occupy a certain right of way within the city of Oregon City. And in this case, our city recorder, Nancy I.
Yes, good evening, Mayor and City Commission. We have an application for a new franchise agreement with Light Speed Networks Incorporated. They have submitted an application for a telecommunications franchise for use of the city's public rights of way to provide telecommunications services. LSN, as they are known as, proposes to construct new facilities in the city. They, the applicant has not yet determined the route for the facilities, but they will provide the details of that, those maps at the time that they pull the permit. So that will be before their construction, of course. So they, I don't see them here this evening, but they are ready to go and have been eagerly awaiting the proposed finalization of this agreement. So if you have any questions, I'm here to answer.
Does anybody have a question?
Is this our standard franchise agreement?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Any other comments? Do I hear a motion to approve this resolution?
Move to approve Resolution Number 13-08.
Second.
And again, a unanimous vote. With that, we'll go on to ordinance introduction Number 131006, Chapter 1224 to Oregon City Municipal Code relating to creating a film and media production permit system for use of public property. And that'll be our Economic Development Director, Eric Underwood.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, this is the first reading of this film and media production ordinance. We took, brought this to you on March 12 during work session, talking about the joint effort between Clackamas County and the city of Oregon City to develop a unified or a uniform permitting process for film and media to encourage that type of activity within the city. This, the basic intent of this ordinance is to protect public safety and property during filming activity. And it would be good for a period of 60 days, making sure that the city is always insured during the filming activity that occurs. So with that, I am happy to answer any questions.
We keep track of the number, I presume there's a permitting process already that occurs for a public use, do we keep track of that and have an idea to what degree this has increased over time?
We do, Katie keeps a record of the permits that she's processed, yes. I don't have that number off the top of my head, but that's something we can provide for you.
Any other questions?
No, I think this is great, we had a great.
Commissioner Smith?
No questions, but I just, I think this is great. And we've talked about this topic before, and I think this is another step in the process to make this smoother. And people were, I think, mentioning at the last meeting, how many movies or what movies have been filmed in Oregon City? And there's a website. I think actually Karen Mori set it up, and it's therealoc.net, which has a list of all the movies that have been filmed in Oregon City, commercials, et cetera. And it's, she's put up, she's done a lot of work putting that together, and it's a really good resource, and it's kind of fun to go on there and look at all of the activity that's been happening in Oregon City.
What was the website again?
The realoc.net, but it's spelled reel as in movie reel, R-E-E-L.
Very clever.
Nice.
With no other discussion, does somebody want to, this is, this is for a first reading?
This is the first reading.
Yeah, does somebody want to put a motion for a first reading of the ordinance?
I move to approve the first reading of Ordinance 13-1006.
Second.
Moved and seconded by, moved by Carol Polly, seconded by Rocky Smith. Vote please.
Would you like me to read it?
Oh, yes.
Oh, yes.
Yes, I would.
This is Ordinance 13-1006, an ordinance of the city of Oregon City adding Chapter 12.24 to the Oregon City Municipal Code relating to creating a film and media production permit system for the use of private, sorry, public property.
And it subsequently been moved by Carol Polly and seconded by Rocky Smith. And again, a unanimous vote. Reconsider, a reconsideration of a collaborative planning agreement between the city of Oregon City and Peter McKedrick, trustee of Blue Heron Paper Company. And we have, we do have some citizen comments on it, I also think we have one to read. Paul Edgar.
Thank you, Paul Edgar, Oregon City. My big concern here is citizen involvement and making sure that Oregon City's citizens have some position within this, not just staff. We have a Citizens Involvement Council, and I've been the land use chair of the Citizens Involvement Council, been a land use chair of Kanema Neighborhood Association. And what I see, and what I've hoped would come out of this, is there are some of us that are very concerned, not only about citizen involvement, but we're concerned about making sure that the, that the assets that are there are being represented by the citizens of Oregon City, as kind of like some of our capital. And we have greater, we have some senses to it that are completely different than somebody from, let's say, Metro or Multnomah County or some other places around, or financial interests. We're really interested about the capital of Oregon City. And what I see, and some of that as somebody who is a preservationist like I am, I'm concerned about retaining and sustaining our historic properties. And what I, I get worried when I see banks and all of these other people around having their say at the table. And those of us that are considered, that are citizens, that are vested in, and are, I have no intention to move to any other place in the rest of my life. And I look at people and say, there's a lot of people like me. This is my home. And I'd like to see us have a place at the table. And what I see right now, within this agreement, is there is no place. Zero. And I don't think that's right. And, and, and so, yeah, you can reconsider this, and you could pull out historic preservational wording that didn't impact it. But in reality, what we're really talking about, if you're trying to pull the city together, not pull it apart, we've got to be talking about pulling citizens, getting citizens vested and part of the process, and right now, we just don't seem to be thinking about that. So we'll have city staff working on the project or something like this. But city staff and bankers and Metro and all these other, they're not the citizens. And when you, when you disenfranchise citizenry, and you're making a mistake. But that's your decision, all I'm saying, in my light, in my eyes, that's a mistake. I hope you don't do that, thank you.
Probably respond to that, well, no, I'll go ahead and respond to it now, because I believe we have a message from James Nacida, who wasn't able to be here.
He's sitting right there.
Well, he is there, oh, okay. You want to read your own document? Excuse me. Nancy? Yeah, we have to proceed here, and James is here, so do you want to come up? Or do you want to read, we'll read into the record your.
If you can read it in the record.
Okay, fine. Nancy, would you read James?
I will. This is a comment from James Nacida concerning this item on the agenda. My comment is that I do not believe the City Commission should reconsider, retract, or undo its language pertaining to preservation at the last City Commission meeting on March 6. Apparently, this decision is being reconsidered because the city's partners on Blue Heron and primarily Metro are concerned that the change was made without consulting them. However, the letter to Mr. Desmond demonstrates that as early as 2011, the city of Oregon City clearly understood the four partner values to include preservation. There was notice, this is no surprise here. Second, the City Commission was responding to concerns expressed by citizens on March 6. I might suggest that if the City Commission needs to reconsider the March 6 decision, that it simply change the language adopted on that date to mirror the exact same language in the attached letter. This language is appropriately qualified and should not be perceived as threatening to anyone. It does, however, clearly state preservation as a value. It would also demonstrate that the city is being and has been consistent and is respecting the concerns of its citizens. Perhaps the whole letter could be incorporated by reference into the collaboration agreement. Thank you for your consideration and best regards in your deliberations this evening. James Nacida.
I'm going to go ahead and read the letter that he was referring to. "Mr. Desmond, this letter is to confirm that the city of Oregon City supports the continued investigation of creating a lasting partnership with Metro and other stakeholders for the acquisition-long-term planning of the Blue Heron site and Willamette Falls, one of Oregon's most important natural, cultural, and historic places. We believe there are many shared goals, including providing public access through site to the falls, the potential for significant economic development of the 22 acres by creating a vision for the site that will serve as a catalyst for private investment and job generation, the creation of a place that tells amazing cultural history and significance of the site, including potential reuse and preservation of the historic resources on the property and the property for habitat restoration. The proposed partnership and required financial and staff commitments were discussed at the City Commission and executive session on September 7, 2011, because they are an integral part to any offer that would be made on property to the bankruptcy trustee. During the meeting, the Commission and Metro representatives discussed requirement for $100,000 of a partner, a partner investment per year for seven to 10 years. The Commission reached consensus that this was a reasonable approach and directed staff to continue working on an agreement with the investment commitment included. The concept of separate governmental entity to provide a framework for decision-making to be adopted by each partner was discussed, and there was direction to continue the work necessary to create the entity. The Commission was also made aware there would be additional costs associated with the long-term planning of the site, and that in-kind staff and resources, resource commitments would be necessary in addition to the $100,000 per year in order to place a bid on the property, perform all the necessary due diligence required before closing on the site, and successfully plan for the uses on the property, which the Commission understood and directed the staff to continue to pursue. The city remains an active participant in due diligent process and will support the findings and decision of the partnership as we move through the acquisition planning process. Oregon City appreciates the opportunity to work with Metro and the other stakeholders to create a solid partnership that protects and eventually develops a historically, culturally, environmentally, and economically significant property on behalf of Oregon City, the region, and the state. The city looks forward to working with Metro and other potential partners to develop the necessary intergovernmental agreements and to present those along with formal expenditure authorization to the City Commission for official public adoption at the appropriate time." The, first of all, I'm going to ask the city manager, the wording of the value, and that was the potential, the creation of a place that tells amazing cultural history and significance of the site, including the potential reuse and preservation of historic resources of the property, is that the specific wording that's in our, at our agreement? I don't think so.
The MOUs, I think the MOU is a little bit different than that, but I don't have it in front of me, but I know it's slightly different.
Right, I would state that the, that was a memorandum of understanding, and the binding, the binding documents would be an intergovernmental agreement, which we have not entered into at this particular time. We are in a partnership with other entities, and the big concern is whether the submission of a change of the nature of the document would in fact really unravel the relations we have with Metro and the county, which is going to be one of the participants. There's also a commitment in the, but, well, I shouldn't say commitment, there's a item, a line item in the budget from the governor to provide substantial funds for this effort. There's a real concern that changing the nature of the document would undermine all these activities. And there's been an email that has gone out that we would bring this forward. I was the one that suggested the, a document accompany the approval of the agreement with, with the bankruptcy trustee, and the concern is whether this deal would go through or not. And that's what's before us now. There is a guarantee, and I've mentioned this every time it's come up, our comprehensive plan explicitly brings out the site for a master planning in its own right. And it was made clear at, I believe, the previous commission meeting or the one before that, that we may want to come up with a unique zoning for that site. It's not necessarily a zoning we have, but this would be a process, it'd be very much a public process. There'd be various stakeholder meetings and public comment invited from anybody. So I don't think we as citizens are challenged in any way in terms of staff who somehow are distinct from the city, I don't understand that. Our staff is hired by our city managers, our city manager works for city commission members, which in fact were elected by the electorate. There's not going to be any attempt in this process to have any entity take the project over. The ultimate, the ultimate driver of our success is going to be the landowner. It might be possible with the, with the correct combination of partners that the city may in fact be a landowner in the process, or maybe not. But if we, if we, if we don't, if we don't enter this agreement with a trustee, then the trustee is going to walk away from us and going to look for somebody to procure the property, and we might have very little voice in the process. Right now, that's not the case. You want to talk just a little bit about the timeframe in which this agreement is operating and what the intent of it is?
Well, I mean, the trustee is concerned because as we, as we have talked about in our last, last work session, and I think each time we've talked about preservation, we know that preservation means different things to different people, and so they want as much flexibility as possible. But I don't think it's any surprise to them that we want some of those structures down there definitely to be preserved. And I think actually economically, anybody who buys the property is going to be compelled to that same conclusion, because some of the, some of the buildings that are there just, it's very obvious to all the architects that we've taken down there that there's great redevelopment value in those, some of those older buildings. I would like to mention, just a minute, take a minute to rebut some of what Mr. Edgar said about the public process. Not so much that staff aren't members of the community, because many of them are, but that staff doesn't, we are not going to drive this process, we're going to be working on it. Somebody has to do the work. But what, there is absolutely no interest, and from my perspective, for the city to want to plan this in some sort of a backroom way. Because ultimately, where plans like this tend to break down is when you go from a plan to implementing it. And usually to implement it, you have to change zoning. That is a whole public process for hearings and all of that. And if the public hasn't bought in to the whole process that came up with the zoning, when you get to the zoning hearings, you usually have a train wreck and it doesn't work. And so that's just step one. Even the trustee probably recognizes that if the public isn't involved in that process along the way and feel represented because of the members of the community and the region that'll be involved in this planning effort, they're all going to have different ideas about what the priority should be on the site. And we're going to have a big challenge just trying to bring ourselves together as a community around some of the more specific details down there about what's going to be done. So I think there is some fear about, maybe it's about preservation, maybe it's about public participation, but from my perspective, we absolutely want as much public input and participation. I hope we have 100 people show up at every single event, because I would like to have them show up and participate. They're going to have some great ideas for us to consider, and I really hope that people will come out in droves and get excited about this and be part of the process and make it happen. Because we really need the public support to sustain the project long-term into the future, because it's a big undertaking, and it's a real game changer for Oregon City, and it's downtown.
Commissioner Mum.
Very good comments, and I do, I, I understand the concern about citizen involvement. I absolutely do. We cannot always trust our government to do the right thing without citizen involvement. We do have a visioning plan that all of our citizens are going to be involved with. There will be time for that. We have to start the first step by doing this collaborating agreement. Couple of things I was going to ask, we don't own the property, correct? So could the judge have somebody come in tomorrow and say, "I'll pay you X amount of millions of dollars, and I'm going to put a mill back on that site"? Could that happen? So this is, I mean, we have to be proactive, and we, we have to move this process along. I think half of our, half of our city staff at least live in Oregon City, they are citizens. They have just as much right to be involved in this as anybody else in this room. So citizen involvement is key, and it will happen.
If I might, just for the query purposes, I don't know what point. That, the, I don't know necessarily if the bad thing, a bad thing would be a mill occur at that site, depending on what kind of mill it could be.
I just wanted to say.
In any case, the point is the current zoning still exists.
Right.
And therefore, a property owner could come in and then go ahead and build according to the current zoning. So that's, I think that's the point you were making.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I've got Commissioner Smith.
I will echo some of what Commissioner Mum just stated, and the mayor as well, but I do have concerns that I think every one of us have, and that's why we made the decision we made at the last meeting. I'm a little surprised, because I mean, the letter states it just the way I remember it, and at some point, the wording changed. And, you know, that does concern me a little bit. But I assume that the wording changed in that process because the process was, that, if the wording was changed in some way, it got us to where we are today. And where we are today is far further than we probably ever thought we would be. And this is, this is a huge, I mean, in my lifetime or any of our lifetimes, I have never, I mean, we always waited for this day, we always waited for this moment. And to have one word shrivel it all apart is, is a major, major worry. I think it's very clear where our commission is in terms of its feeling on the preservation of that site. I, I think it's extremely clear that all the other partners have the same concerns, all in different ways, probably. But I think that we can't stop where we're, we can't stop moving forward. And when we get to, through this next step, we're going to be able to address these, these issues in a much bigger way. And I don't expect all the citizens in Oregon City to understand that at this moment, but this, you know, preservation of this site is probably the biggest concern I have. And, but at the same time, we got to, we need to move forward, because it is that important. And that's not an answer that people are going to like, probably, right at this moment, but big picture, I think it's the right decision.
We have additional. We have additional citizen comments, and I want to give the commissioners opportunity to speak, and I have Carol Pauli.
Yes.
Commissioner Pauli.
So kind of to reiterate what's been said, timing, there's timing, and then steps. This is a huge project, and we cannot do this alone. We knew that we would need partners if we were going to be the director, if we were going to be able to have control. We did need partners in addition to us, and we have to build a relationship and, and trust with the partners while the city is directing. And, yeah, I think it was easy to kind of get caught up last time, as far as, you know, what was important in preservation and everything, and, you know, I just assumed before that that was, that was a given, that's something that's been talked about, something that's always been talked about through the, through the tours. But going back to timing, the timing is you have to have that relationship and trust with your partners. There was a comment made to me, I asked, you know, what, I asked some, one of our partners, "What surprises you the most about this project?", and what they said is the capability of the city to be able to handle a project like this. And I think that we really need to, you know, stand strong and show that we are capable, and that we consult with our partners first in this timing and just this, this stage right now, so that we can move on to the next step, which is the master plan public process, which will give due process for citizens and partners and everybody to put in their two cents and make sure that everything is included.
I have Amber Holbeck, which is to speak.
Mayor, before you do that, you were talking about commission members having, having input, and I just happened, I have my BlackBerry on right here, and I have an email from Commissioner Roth. And earlier today, I don't know how many of you checked your email, but the city got a letter from Washington County supporting this project. And when we took, I believe we took Chair Ludlow and the, the new county commission members from Clackamas County on a tour, they happened to have the chair of Washington County Board there as John's guest, and we went on a tour, and so he, he got nice and soaking wet like the rest of us did that day.
A lot of moisture there.
And I was just so, so pleased that someone from Washington County. Now, why that matters is because it's changing the tenor of cooperation in Washington, because we're talking about a big local commitment from us, and a kind of relatively small one from the trustee, but still an important one, and the regional partners making a commitment. But we all know, while the governor might have $5 million in the budget there, and even if we can raise a match that's significant, that is a drop in the bucket compared to what's really going to take to do that site in a world, so that it is an international achievement.
Right.
And that's, and I'm aiming that high until you folks tell me not to. So, and I don't think you're going to tell me that. But Commissioner Roth just wrote back, because I had sent out to you the, the actual letters today, letters of support to Congress from, from Washington County, and Commissioner Roth writes, "This is really fabulous. One of the points that was impressive to all we spoke to was the cohesive cooperation on this project." Kathy Roth, Oregon City Commission President. So people are watching how we handle this, and I think it's important that we handle it like a good steward, knowing that preservation is important down there. And, but not allowing ourselves to get tripped up over the, the individual definitions of what it can mean. So I just wanted to share that with you, and I'll defer.
Thank you.
I'll just take a minute, follow up, sorry, Amber, that at the last Metro Policy Advisory Committee, Andy Dyke, who is the chair of the Washington County Commission, usually Washington County people are sitting on one side, and we're sitting on Clackamas County on the other. I walked in, and Andy Dyke was sitting right where, next to where I was going to sit, and we were talking, and one of the new Metro council members was there making a report, and it seemed just on, slightly on the negative side, and Andy said, "Well, I went out and saw this site, I'm going to write a letter of support." And I think subsequently, all of the new Metro counselors, subsequent to this meeting, have come to, yeah, yesterday, came, came to look at the site, and I, I think, I think that skepticism on, on some of their parts has been kind of done away with. I mean, they, anybody who hasn't had the opportunity to go right up to the falls, right next to them, you think, you think they're good, but they're great. Yeah, they're great. Sorry, Amber, sure, sure, sure enough.
I, I just appreciate the opportunity. Amber Holbeck from the Oregon City Chamber of Commerce, and I'm going to do my very best in three minutes. First of all, I really appreciate the comments that I'm hearing tonight, and I wanted to start by saying that I am so pleased in what I'm reading and hearing in terms of Oregon City really standing out as the leader of this project. This is a massive undertaking, and to me, moving forward even with an MOU of relatively small dollar significance in the whole grand scheme of things, is a pretty incredible leap of moving forward on this project and saying we're serious, and we, we're serious about the task that we are undertaking. And in fact, I think it, it's a little bit of a make or break. And the reason I say that is Clackamas County has, and in some times even our own dear city, has been seen as not being business friendly. And I think this is a huge step in, in seeing that impression or that, that thought process changed. I think this is a great place to start. I don't think there's, I know, I haven't had the desire for this to be a publicly owned facility necessarily. I knew that this would be a public-private kind of effort all the way along, just the sheer magnitude, certainly wanting to preserve those pieces that are of significance. And I know that you have some fabulous staff people here that will help to ensure that. Christina, preservation, she's got that piece.
She's the queen.
And, and I think that there's a clear understanding and ownership of the heritage of this area, and I think that will be, be pulled out through all of those citizen meetings all the way along through the master planning process. I guess I just wanted to say that I, I believe that this master planning process will be of colossal scale. Having been through, you know, the Beaver Creek Road concept planning and all those kinds of things, that looks like small potatoes compared to what I'm expecting this to be, to be quite honest. And I have no doubt that the Chamber of Commerce will make all of the noise we possibly can to have everybody participating in the process. We've already been trying to get people engaged, and will continue to do so. So go forward, make agreements, let's get this moving. Thank you.
And you did it under three minutes.
Yep, very good. It's because all of the good stuff was already said.
Well, with that, I think the action has to be to move to, to just send the planning agreement that we had before us to Peter McKittrick without any additional language, and I don't know how to oppose that.
Here's a suggestion, see if it works for you. The motion would be that the adopted collaborative planning agreement be the sole position of the Oregon City Commission with regard to the collaborative planning process for the Blue Heron property.
Move to approve.
Okay, move, move for the, for that motion, have a second.
Second.
Commissioner Mum made the motion, and Commissioner Smith seconded it. And it was unanimous vote. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
I think Commissioner, Commissioner Roth was planning to be on speakerphone, but I think a certain event occurred there in Washington that was more important to her than the commission meeting. I don't know if you want to stick to that.
She and Mr. Conkle, I think, have very much earned a night off. They've been working hard there all week.
Yes.
We've had tremendous cooperation, as I understand it, from our Metro counselor.
Correct.
Carlotta Colette, and she's, she's, she's been, she's been a great person to work with, and Metro has been a tremendous partner in this effort.
And Clackamas County has also had their lobbyists there helping, so it's, it's been a, it's a team effort, and it's the momentum around this thing and the excitement that's starting to be generated. We're going to a new place as a community, and I'm kind of.
And I'm very pleased and excited that both Commissioner Roth and Tony Conkle could be there.
Yeah.
That is tremendous.
I don't know, I was going to save this for my reports, which are right around the corner, but.
Sorry.
Since you're talking about Mr. Conkle, today in the, on the front page, above the fold, Daily Journal of Commerce, right here.
Wow.
And the headline is "Blue Heron Effort Takes Flight". It's kind of catchy. I've got copies for each of you to.
Oh, good.
I'm going to hand that out, and then.
Thank you.
I do have one that you could pass around for members of the public. I think it's, some of you don't subscribe to it, but. It's a very upbeat article about the site and the potential, as well as some of the challenges, so.
Great. Thank you.
Tony Conkle sure looks proud, doesn't he?
As he should.
Very good. If I might, what do we have coming up next here?
Consent. Consent calendar.
Okay. I'd like, before we get onto the consent agenda, I failed to announce something here. St. Paul's Episcopal Church, in partnership with Oregon City's SIR team, will host an event, so no cost event. James Roddy, Roddy?
Roddy?
Roddy, I'll say. A national-recognized speaker on disaster preparedness will speak to a group of leaders from Oregon City and neighboring communities on preparing your business, church, and neighborhood for the big one, family disasters and everything in between. It's at 11:00 a.m., and it's at, I'll give you the contact person, if you, advanced signups are required, you'll contact Greg Swanson, (503) 956-2960, and I wanted to announce that. It's on, it's going to be on April 6th, and find out the, the venue there, but they do want, they do want notification if you're planning to go to this. But of course, this is a very important item here in the Pacific Northwest, the, the potential of the disaster is, is there, so I want to make that announcement. With that, motion for the consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second?
Second. Oh. I was reading this great article.
Again, it's unanimous. Thank you, and thank you from the input from the people that came. With that, city managers' report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I wanted to remind you and members of the public that there will be a Transportation System Plan Public Hearing at Monday night's Planning Commission Meeting. That's Monday, March 25th at 7:00 p.m. here in the City Hall Commission Chambers. Also want to let you know that on Friday, Oregon City Public Works submitted a grant application for the 2016-18 Active Transportation FFA Complete Streets Grant Program. I know that's a lot to say, but the application included a project estimate of 7.2 million. Is there anything else to add, John, that you want them to know about?
No, we talked about it before, I just let you know it actually went and got submitted.
Yeah, very good.
Keep your fingers, I guess, keep your fingers crossed, but we noticed through the step process that if you're in contact with your Metro counselors, mention that project is an important one to you, because I don't know that we got there with the step process, so.
I was going to ask, have you heard any, I'm sorry, have you heard anything about the projects we submitted?
We didn't, we didn't make the 100, 150% cut list on the Main Street project, but we're going to.
One suggestion I want to make, John, is that if you can get me some information about this that the commission members could use in those conversations. We'll send those on to you, and then you can initiate some of those conversations with some of those folks in the next few weeks. I don't see where that would hurt anything. So the last thing I have is that we are working very diligently on the biennial budget. The budget meeting is scheduled, and it's not just a coincidence, on April 15th, Tax Day, at the Pioneer Center at 5:30. So mark your calendars. That's all I have, Your Honor.
Okay. There's been a big press forward by the mayors of the cities of Oregon to make sure that the state legislature puts the top priority on 1 to 12 education in terms of this budget process, and I signed on with it along with another 40 mayors from throughout the area. A big, a big effort and push on the, on the part of the new mayor of Portland, Mayor Hale, he's, he's, he's clearly a regional player. We have these regional mayor meetings, and, and he's, he's, he's been there at almost every one of them since he's taken office, and he's, he's clearly interested in working with the regional partners in at least three counties, and perhaps Cora County as well, so.
Maybe a letter of support from him for a couple of things.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Very good. I actually mentioned to him, and I mentioned this to Commissioner Smith, but we've approached Portland before, but the possibility of seeing support, support on the, on the Ermitainger House, and he's given me his card to give him a call, set up a meeting.
Very good.
Very nice.
Anything else from the other commissioners?
No.
Can't get out before 8 o'clock?
Oh, yes we can.
Yes, we can.
And we will, hit that thing.
We're the core city.